Welcome to the Lionel Lakes City Council Forum sponsored by the League of Women Voters. I am Julie Trude, the Vice President of the League of Women Voters of Anoka Blaine Coon Rapids area. I do not live in Lionel Lakes. The League of Women Voters conducts candidate forums to provide the public with an opportunity to hear candidates discuss the issues that are important to them. Questions posed to the candidates come from those submitted by the public. The League is a nonpartisan organization that does not support or oppose any political party or candidate. The views expressed in each forum are those of the candidates and not of the League of Women Voters. We are recording this forum at North Metro TV Studios. The recording will be posted in its entirety on the North Metro TV website, the LWV ABC website, the LWV ABC YouTube channel, and the Vote 411 website. Candidates may post and share links to the recording in its entirety, but editing is authorized only for official media reporting. Excerpts or edited clips of candidate forums may not be used for partisan or political purposes. We're very pleased that all five city council candidates are participating in this forum. Present with me is Julia Nelson, Terry O'Connell, Chris Stoll, Dale Stays, and Randy Reniker. Voters will be able to select two candidates for city council when they vote. The forum will begin with two background questions provided beforehand, and then we'll move to questions submitted by the public. We end with one-minute closing statements. I will alternate who answers first using a random grid created to alter the order in which candidates respond. We also have a timer present to help the candidates know when their time is finished. So we're going to start with Candidate Stays. What is your motivation to run for this office and what experience or knowledge would help you to serve effectively?
Thank you. Thank you. My name is Dale Stays. I am running for Lionel Lakes City Council. I believe the government should be run rooted in integrity, transparency, and service. I'd like to begin by taking some time to remember Sean Silveira, who was a Lionel Lakes police officer who 20 years ago passed away during service. Next week, we are doing a 5K in memory of him, and I just wanted to take this time to remember Sean Silveira. Growing up on a farm, I learned the value of hard work, resourcefulness, and making the most of what you have. Those lessons have guided me through my career in IT, manufacturing, and civic leadership. I began my service in 2012 with nothing more than hand-painted signs, a heart for the community, and no prior elected officials. While others may just be starting this journey, I bring 14 years of city council experience and two years of planning and zoning commission experience. I'm prepared to lead immediately and have a stronghold on the city's operations and needs.
Thank you. Candidate Reniker, what is your motivation to run for this office and what experience or knowledge would help you to serve effectively?
Thank you for asking the question. Thank you for having me here tonight. I appreciate this opportunity. My name is Randy Reniker. I'm a 45-year resident of the area, and my motivation for running would be this. Several years ago, there was a development plan in our neighborhood on our cul-de-sac street, and the discussion was to turn our cul-de-sac street into a busy thoroughfare. And I organized a group of neighbors, 17 of us on our block. I organized our group, and we petitioned the city staff on what can we do to stop this change in our road, opening up our road to 1,800 vehicles per day? And the answer was a continuous answer from various folks at staff, and that answer was, "Well, there's really not much you can do about it." And that answer, it didn't sit well with me, and it didn't sit well with my neighbors. And we decided, let's see what we can do about this. So that's my primary motivation. I want to see what I can do to maybe help bring our city in a direction that's for the citizens, working collaboratively with the city. Thank you.
Candidate O'Connell, what is your motivation to run for this office and what experience or knowledge would help you to serve effectively?
Thank you for inviting me. I appreciate the time you're giving us. The reason I'm running for office and all the volunteering things I do is because I want to leave Lionel Lakes to the next generation as desirable place to live, just like when I moved in. I'd like to see it enhanced, not taking away all the opportunities to do things, but to do them slowly and thoughtfully. So, I want a little bit of information about me. I am open-minded. I do believe that the diversity is the spice of life. I'm a patient and persistent person. I have been involved in many community activities. A former member of the Lionel Lakes Environmental Board, volunteer with Friends of the Mississippi, in particular, Stream Health Evaluation Program. These streams are actually running through Lionel Lakes. And member of the Rice Creek Watershed Citizen Advisory Committee, and now I just currently, well, this year, I've been doing a lake monitoring of a lake that's part of a group called Community Assisted Monitoring Program. I've also been an election judge on years I'm not running for office. I have the time and energy to be on the council. I think it's, I am retired, and another thing I want to let you know, in my past work history, I have been able to deal very successfully with, we all have, people have different personalities and perspectives when they're looking at things, and that's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Candidate Nelson, what is your motivation to run for this office and what experience or knowledge would help you to serve effectively?
Thank you, League of Women Voters and North Metro TV. I had an experience very similar to Randy Reniker's. I learned a couple of years ago that our community gardens and the homes of some older Lionel Lakes residents were going to be taken by eminent domain and bulldozed in order to put in a fast-food place, another office building, and an oil-change place. I went to every single city council meeting. I was extremely frustrated. I did not get any response. I did not get any help. No one ever went and talked to the people being affected. Now, we have traffic rerouted through our quiet legacy neighborhood, and it's enormously frustrating. We need a fresh take on Lionel Lakes. We need new eyes. We need people who are going to say no to the overbuilding. We have to stop disrupting our lovely neighborhoods. We have to preserve our habitat. We have to actually listen to the residents of Lionel Lakes, those of us who have lived here for decades. This is an extremely important topic. Please vote November 4.
Thank you. Candidate Stoll, what is your motivation to run for this office and what experience or knowledge would help you to serve effectively?
Hi, thanks for having me. My name is Christopher Stoll. I bought the old Ray-Bans Arena. For historical background, Ray-Bans Arena was built in 1968 in the village of Lionel Lakes and its Midwest's largest complete riding facilities. When I bought that place, I was fixing it up because it had sat basically for decades being dilapidated. A neighbor made a noise complaint, and the city weaponized themselves, the DNR, the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, and the Rice Creek Watershed District against me. Basically, I agree with Dale. Farms are important, and that's the reason I bought a farm, to put my kids around, a farm setting. So I moved to Lionel Lakes for the rural setting. I'm also a trained union plumber. I worked for Local 34, then I went non-union, then I worked for Local 15. I'm also licensed in the cities of St. Paul and Minneapolis as well. That's important because we have water treatment and storm water issues in Lionel Lakes. When they weaponized the Rice Creek Watershed District against me and the DNR, it cost me approximately $20,000 in lawyers to fight them, to find out years later that I do have a 1968 special-use permit. And basically, I'm running to fight the corruption and to slow the grow. I will vote no. Vote for Stoll.
Thank you. Now we move to the second question the candidates had beforehand, and Candidate O'Connell will be first. What are your goals for the future of the city of Lionel Lakes?
I think of more priorities. I believe our lakes, dark skies draw people to the area, and we have to keep the lakes healthy or get them to become healthy by keeping the water on the land where it falls and letting it dispense slowly into our lakes. So we don't have the bounce for the fishermen where it does a lot of fish kill. There are other reasons why, too. The dark skies have been something people have wanted more and more over the years. There are cities that promote that they're a dark-skies city. There are numerous reasons. One, that I just learned this year, is birds tend to fly at night, and with the lights, they get confused. So that's something to think about. I knew about fireflies and other things, and as farmers, growth of crops needing dark skies. We also, back when I actually was, another time when I was running and I was going around canvassing, numerous people, this is people on county roads, collectors, and dead-end streets, all mentioned they wanted slower roads. And primarily, it was to slow the roads down, to make it safer for their children, for everything, and to be able to get a better or a finished trail system. We've already started a trail system, but it is, should be built as we are doing infrastructure.
Thank you. Candidate Nelson, you'll be next. What are your goals for the future of the city of Lionel Lakes?
My goals for the future of Lionel Lakes are, number one, police and fire and emergency response, safety first. We need to fully fund those departments, fully fund what our chief and our fire department are asking for. Number two, I would also like to slow the grow. We are building way too fast. I fear we are overbuilding. Number three, if we allow developers to build on our land, they must also contribute to a path and sidewalk system. So many of our legacy neighborhoods do not have bike paths. They do not have sidewalks. It is unsafe for our children and our families to be out trying to bike to our local businesses. And I think that it is not unreasonable to ask our developers to put in sidewalks, put in trails. Lastly, we have to keep our habitat. We have to keep our green spaces. This is what makes Lionel Lakes unique. We must keep our fingers of land for our endangered species, for our blanding turtles, for our deer, for our pheasants, for our fox. This is why people move to Lionel Lakes.
Thank you. Candidate Reniker, you are next. What are your goals for the future of the city of Lionel Lakes?
Yeah, thanks for the question. I'm not a very polished speaker, so I took some bullet points here. I'm going to hit those real quick, so pardon me for gazing down at my notepad. First thing I'm going to do is advocate for town hall-style meetings. So I often hear from residents and friends and family. I have all kinds of friends and family in the city of Lionel Lakes. It's where I grew up. Going through projects in their neighborhood, on their street, at their local park, and we seem to have a disconnect between city staff at times and the residents. So I would like to advocate for a town hall-style meeting anytime we have a project that's going to impact a neighborhood and disrupt the lives of our neighbors. Secondly, I'd like to ensure that development reflects the voices of existing residents. Oftentimes, we're willing to bend over to please the needs of developers without paying particular attention to the folks that built this community and contributed to taxes for decades and decades. So it's a priority of mine to focus on the existing residents while also facilitating growth, both commercially and residentially. I firmly believe that smart growth equals a stronger community. Lastly, I wholeheartedly believe that the city should spend their dollars the same way that I spend mine with my family. I will agonize over every cent that the city spends. Probably will make some enemies by doing so, but I think it's critical that we spend the city's money like we spend our own.
Thank you. Candidate Stoll, what are your goals for the future of the city of Lionel Lakes?
Thanks for the question. Number-one goal would be slowing the grow down. With the expedited growth that we're currently having, we're also having yearly tax increases that are compounded yearly. We have members in our community that aren't fixed incomes. They can't continue to pay for new development for the builders and the contractors. The second thing I would say, as I would agree, that the environment's important. We need to leave open spaces. That's the reason most of the people moved to our community in the first place. Right now, I see our community turning into Blaine, which isn't necessarily a bad thing, but Blaine's the old maple wood, and the old maple wood is the old part of Frog Town. So the more we develop, the crappier it's becoming, and the more money we're having to pay. Well, in the meantime, the developers stuff their pockets with cash and destroy our environment. We have a lot of problems coming up, but the main thing that I'm concerned about is our water treatment and our water, and that's going to be a huge colossal expense for our taxpayers. I'm still working. I can afford it. I can get more money. My community members that are on a fixed income can't.
Thank you. Now we have Candidate Stays. What are your goals for the future of the city of Lionel Lakes?
Thank you. So I would like to see the city grow responsibly with transparency, safety, and access at the core of every decision. We need to also deliver on the basics of clean water, strong public safety, and well-maintained trails and parks. That means seeing the $32 million water treatment plan come to completion, supporting our fire and police, and expanding the amenities at Tower Park. I'd also like to review the new public works building plans that are currently in works. I'm also committed to expanding our broadband choice. Residents deserve more options for internet and TV service. Third, I'll keep government focused on what truly matters. That includes standing against municipal-run cannabis ventures and hidden fees, ensuring every tax dollar is spent with purpose and transparency. I believe in empowering residents through clear communication, accessible services, meaningful input in the decisions that shape our future. Also, developments must be thoughtfully planned and aligned with the needs and values of our community. I'm proud to live here, serve here, and work here alongside neighbors who care deeply about our future. Together, we can keep Lionel Lakes strong, connected, and forward-thinking.
Thank you. Now we'll move to questions where you have one minute, and we'll continue with random. But I will just tell you so you're not so anxious that we'll have Candidate Nelson, then O'Connell, then Stoll, then Stays, then Reniker for this question. So Candidate Nelson, what do you think about the proposed new public works facility, and what needs will be or should be addressed?
What do I think about the new public works facility?
The proposed public works?
Yes, yes. I know what you're talking about, and I know that there is a little controversy behind this. Some people think that we shouldn't spend the money, but the fact is, our old public works facility, it has become outdated. I think we need to spend the money. I think that since we are a city that is viable and thriving, we must have a fully-functioning public works facility. I would vote yes for that.
All right. And Candidate O'Connell, I'll repeat the question. What do you think about the proposed new public works facility, and what needs will be or should be addressed?
I agree with Mrs. Nelson, Ms. Nelson, because it's a very old structure that it's in now, and it's also used as a voting place. And having the infrastructure of the public works there, it's been too many years, and things just need to be redone. It's a necessity. There are some things we don't want to pay for, but we have to. Sorry.
Thank you. And Candidate Stoll, I'll repeat the question. What do you think about the proposed new public works facility, and what needs will be or should be addressed?
That's a good question. Me owning a lot of cars and farm equipment and stuff, it makes sense to keep your equipment inside if you can afford to do so, but I'd like to see the numbers on that and where the proposition is on the location. I think absolutely the taxpayers that bought the equipment shouldn't have it outside in the rain, for example. I also think, though, that that piece of property that it's currently on should be reusable. So I think the location could remain the same. Now, I thought I heard that they wanted to combine it with the water treatments facility, and I've got some problems with that because when they built that, they built it 4.8 feet too close to the road, and then the city issued their own variance to get around that. So I got to look at the numbers. I've owned businesses. Let's do the smart thing. Let's not waste our money anymore.
All right. Thank you. And now the same question will go to, I guess we're actually going in order right now. Stays. Candidate Stays, what do you think about the proposed new public works facility, and what needs will be or should be addressed?
Sure, thank you. So yeah, we have a lot of expensive equipment. We've got, each snowplow is a quarter million dollars now. All their trucks are very expensive. All the lawn equipment has to be maintained. Having it all under one roof would make it easier for staff. We now have two mechanics, and having a place for them to have a decent shop and be able to work efficiently, safely, we need to make sure that our employees are safe, and having this new facility would definitely give them a more safer environment than what they currently have. And so I am in full support of this public works building, and I think this location's a great location. We're going to be tweaking the access points a little bit better so it's more off of the side road instead of the main street, so I think we can have better flow-through there, and I think we're going to be able to manage our neighbors and make sure that we are good neighbors around that area as well.
Thank you. Candidate Reniker, we now ask the same question. What do you think about the proposed new public works facility, and what needs will be or should be addressed?
Thank you. As one of the founding members of Slow to Grow Love Lionel Lakes, doesn't mean I'm against development. I'm not against growth. I'm just against a specific type of growth. So with that, I think within our city, we need to create the proper type of tax base, along with that, city growth. So the new public works building, I support it 100%. Growing up on a hobby farm, we had several tractors, several pieces of equipment. They always went inside the building. You leave stuff outside, it's going to deteriorate. It's going to just cost us on the back end. So I fully agree with housing equipment inside, and I believe we need to have a safe and comfortable environment for public works employees. So that makes sense to me. One of the things that I would support is increasing our tax base through some commercial development near our busy interstates. We're blessed with having Interstate 35E and Interstate 35W. That's where we want to stack our commercial development, support the tax base, support public buildings.
Thank you. And actually, you're going to start with this third question, or the second, next question. And this is about the rookery. The rookery has been open for a few years. Do you have ideas for improving or expanding what is offered there? And we'll ask Candidate Reniker this one.
Yeah, thanks for asking. We actually attended the building. The building was initially funded, or founded, as a YMCA, and my family, we were members at the YMCA for some time. Life just got a little bit too busy, and we had to eliminate our membership. The rookery, I support the city's investment in the rookery. I think it's really nice for our community. I think the best thing to do is perhaps put a survey out to the citizens. What would they like to see in the rookery? What does the rookery lack that would help drive membership numbers? That may have taken place already. I don't recall seeing it in my household, but I think that would be the best move forward. What would the residents like to see at the rookery? And let's see if it makes sense financially, and see if it's something we can do.
And Candidate Stoll, you will be answering the same question. The rookery has been open for a few years. Do you have ideas for improving or expanding what is offered?
That's a good question, improving or expanding what is offered. The problem with the rookery is it was funded by the YMCA in a joint venture with our city, and it sounded like a good idea, but fiscally, it didn't make sense for the YMCA, so they pulled the plug after approximately 13 years. Since then, we've been in the red on that for hundreds of thousands of dollars a year. I think it's time to sell the rookery. Furthermore, we just sold our old fire station in the southern part of our city, while we're hiring more fire department guys, and that part of our city is growing. Make it make sense.
And now I'll ask Candidate Stays the same question. The rookery has been open for a few years. Do you have ideas for improving or expanding what is offered?
Thank you. So yeah, I was just looking at our agenda for this coming Monday, and we have eight new treadmills that are being discussed to be added to that. That is just an $80,000 investment, I believe, or $90,000 investment that we're going to be discussing to upgrade some of the equipment in there. We also know that the building around it, the space around it, is dedicated for that kind of use, and so I really believe that we can bond and do some kind of referendum, perhaps, to improve that space. I'd like to see some sheets of ice or some basketball arenas around that area. There is some land dedicated to that space. It's going to take a while to come up with a vision and be able to create the funding for that, but I think there are pools of money out there for that, and I think that rookery space is going to be definitely a space of expansion, as well as that area by Tower Park. So I think the combination of the Tower Park and the rookery, I think, is going to be something I'd like to see combined together for sports and park use for residents.
Thank you. Now Candidate O'Connell, I'll ask you the same question. The rookery has been open for a few years. Do you have ideas for improving or expanding what is offered?
I actually do not have any ideas for expanding the offerings. When they first opened, I went and checked it out. I do laps in the winter. That pool is not conducive to people doing laps, so I did not leave the place I go to currently, which I've been going to for years. I know I'm a resident, but it just doesn't work. But what I think might help us, instead of trying to keep it only Lionel Lakes people, start including Lexington, Hugo, Circle Pines, the whole community for the same pay, not pay, charge rate, instead of a separate, unless they've changed it, but I don't think they have. It's always been separate. It's been more expensive if you don't live in Lionel. And I do think that basketball courts there would be wonderful, but I would like to see not them associated with the rookery, but make them open for the people that are living in the apartments and townhomes that are there.
Thank you. Now Candidate Nelson, the rookery has been open for a few years. Do you have ideas for improving or expanding what is offered?
I have heard many excellent suggestions here. Number one, Randy Reniker said, "Let's ask the community." Excellent idea. Let's ask the community what they want. Secondly, there are important areas within a town that don't necessarily make you money and that cost you money. The rookery is a wonderful family gathering space. We have beautiful space right outside the rookery. We could put a gazebo. We could have our local bands playing there. We could have family gatherings. We could have a splash pad outside, summertime for the little kids. We could have an ice skating rink in the wintertime. We could have a little Santa hut, and we could have small businesses around there serving ice cream, serving a sandwich, catering to our families.
Thank you. And Candidate Stoll, you will start with this next question. Share some things you really love about Lionel Lakes, and then tell us something you hope to change about Lionel Lakes.
Things I really love about Lionel Lakes, that's a tough list. I like the rural setting and feeling and the open spaces of Lionel while still being 35 minutes from downtown St. Paul or downtown Minneapolis. I like the ability to walk down our streets at night and feel safe. I like the quality of our fire department and our police department, for the most part. I like that our neighbors watch out for each other. Sometimes, they watch out a little bit too much. What don't I like about- What don't I like about Lionel Lakes, or what would I want to change? I would like to change the idea that we are told what to do by the Metropolitan Council on housing density. When they were not voted in by us, they were appointed, and they should have no authority telling us what to do.
Thank you. And we're gonna move to candidate Stays. We'll ask you the same question. Share some things you really love about Lionel Lakes, and then tell us something you hope to change about Lionel Lakes.
Sure. I like the feeling that you get living in Lionel Lakes. You're living in your house, you wanna go for a walk after a good meal at home, and you just go for it. There's a trail close by, so you jump on that trail, and you enjoy the local amenities. You go to maybe to a local park. I like the feeling of when you dial 911, that you get a police officer showing up really quickly, so that in time of need, that you have that ability to feel safe. I like the feeling that when you see an unfortunate fire down the way, that you hear the fire trucks moving right away, that we have the fire trucks here in our town that can facilitate. We have two stations that can respond quickly. I do like just the idea that you can be at your house and you can feel safe. One of the things I'd like to see expanded is the rookery, as we talked about, and amenity is coming to Tower Park. We have that space there for us to utilize, and I think that would just add to our livability here in Lionel Lakes.
Thank you. Candidate Nelson, you'll be next. Share some things you really love about Lionel Lakes, and then tell us something you hope to change about Lionel Lakes.
That's easy. I love our open spaces. I love our nature. I love that we have a 5,500 acre wild space. It isn't enough for habitats to thrive. Animals cannot be packed into one square space, no matter how big it is. They must be allowed to move. So what I would like to do is have lots of trails, lots of fingers, it's called, of green spaces. I want more bike paths that are separate from our streets, so that it's safe for our kids and our families to move around our city and to walk on our sidewalks. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll move to candidate Reniker and ask you to share some things you really love about Lionel Lakes, and then tell us something you hope to change about Lionel Lakes.
Thank you. I love our lakes, our parks, our trails. I love the fact that we can take a walk after dinner, and we can see cows grazing in a pasture. I love the fact that each day, my children and I and my wife, we can go out in our backyard, and we collect the eggs that our hens lay. I like the fact that I can take, my son's a huge Twins fan. We can go down and watch a ballgame 25 minutes from home, but when we're back at home in Lionel Lakes, it's a nice rural setting. That's what I really love. Things that I'd like to change about Lionel Lakes, as Ms. Nelson mentioned, and Mr. Stowe, the Metro, Met Council, the stranglehold that they have over our residents, really needs to, really needs to be investigated. Well, investigate is a strong word. Really need to see if we have other opportunities. Town center is our biggest opportunity. As Ms. Nelson mentioned, we could have a park inside of that center with a skating rink. Vendors, a lot of opportunity in town center.
Thank you. Now candidate O'Connell. Share some things you really love about Lionel Lakes, and then tell us something that you would hope to change about Lionel Lakes.
So this is a very easy question for me. I have, behind my house, there's, actually, part of my lawn, not lawn, my yard, is part of a swamp. In there, in the summertime, end of June through the middle of July, is a fairyland of fireflies. And the reason it's like that is because of the dark skies. It's not manicured as parks, people want. There is deadfalls where the fireflies actually incubate and become fireflies. It's a fabulous, fabulous, for me, it just highlights my year, if you can't tell. And with that, I also like the way that we can get, I can, not a break, but I can get to a lake within a few minutes to get all the way down to Long Lake. But with that, we have, let me check, 13 lakes in Lionel Lakes, and two of which I know are no longer on the endangered list. I would like to see more of our lakes get off of that list.
Thank you. I think everyone wants to move now that we've heard all these lovely stories. It's fun to have a good question, right? The next question will start with candidate Stays. This is a little meatier. The Main Street Master Plan has been approved. Do you support it, and how might this plan shape future development?
Sure. Yeah, we certainly took some time to review this whole area. We have discovered a lot of, took a lot of resident input. We took a year to do an environmental assessment. This is an area that has been definitely seen under a lot of scrutiny. I love the idea of how we took community input on it. We have now created AUAR, which is an environmental assessment. Now we have a master plan in that area for what we wanna do, and now we're moving that to the next phase, which is updating our comp plan to be able to work with the current plan that we will have for that area. It is definitely an area that is gonna take a while to develop, and we want it to grow, but it's gonna be thoughtful and very well planned out with resident input.
Thank you. Candidate Stowe, the Main Street Master Plan has been approved. Do you support it, and how might this plan shape future development?
No, I don't support it. Good question. The reason I don't support it is most of my neighbors don't support it as well. It's a high-density, shove-it-down-your-throat master plan with a 2040 projection, once again by the Metropolitan Council, to push high-density, take Paradise and make it a parking lot. It's zoned currently as agricultural, and I don't understand why the city would change the zoning. Oh, wait, 'cause the contractors are gonna make millions, that's why. As far as the amount of homes that are going in there, we don't have the water capacity. We already need to drill new wells. We are currently being sued by White Bear Lake. They won. It's under appeal. It's gonna cost us millions of dollars to bring in these new residents that the contractors aren't paying their fair share for, and that's why we see 7% increase in taxes. The year before, 8%. The year before that, 7%. It's out of control. Don't change the zoning.
Thank you. Candidate Nelson, I'll ask you the same question. The Main Street Master Plan has been approved. Do you support it, and how might this plan shape future development?
I do not support it. And I do not support it, number one, it really was required by the Met Council. This is not what residents of Lionel Lakes wanted. It's very dense. Dale's right. We have water problems. We are being sued by the White Bear Lake watershed. Every time, here's where it stands now. Granted, it is on appeal, but I don't know if we'll win our appeal. Every time their lake, White Bear Lake, falls below a certain level, we in Lionel Lakes, we have to limit our per capita water use. We got lucky this year. We got a lot of rain. That isn't always going to happen. There are huge water problems with this type of density. And this is not what the people want. This is what the Met Council wants, and this is what the developers want. So if I have anything to say about it, no, it is way too dense.
Thank you. Now candidate O'Connell, I'll ask you the same question. The Main Street Master Plan has been approved. Do you support it, and how might this plan shape future development?
I think it's a good start, because my biggest concern when we first looked at this was we're trying to build on swampland that has been tiled for farmland. We, and they had much taller buildings planned on it, and we don't really know 30, 40, 50 years from now, what's gonna happen? Is it gonna sink down? What is really gonna happen? It's not, it was never designed to hold massive buildings. I know that engineers can figure out ways to do it, but we don't know at what cost. And we need to keep that water there at a slow rate, leaving for the better of everyone's drinking water, for everything, for lakes. But I wanted to say quickly that I'm kind of thinking this is gonna be farther out than they planned, because remember back in 2008, when we had the, everything was shut down because the money collapsed? We now have, in the local newspaper, six pages of foreclosed homes. Not every day, but usually on Thursdays. Okay, I'm done.
She just got a little bit extra in there. That's fine, that's fine. And finally, we have council member Reniker. Would you please tell us if, answer this question. The Main Street Master Plan has been approved. Do you support it, and how might this plan shape future development?
Thank you. I support that the city took those steps. I think that was a great move by the city to initiate the master planning process, as well as the AUAR. So I applaud the city for doing that. It was the prudent thing to do. I do not support the plan in concept, because I do not support high density. And I think that's a common thread with all candidates, is we do not support high density. We do not support being told by the Met Council what we have to do in our city. I live in the northwest quadrant. Our property abuts potential development, and that was one of the reasons I became engaged in this, is because I didn't wanna look out our back window and see a four-story apartment building. I also understand the land very well, having grown up in this area, and I can tell you, you walk back there in the spring of the year, and you're gonna sink up to your knees. That land is wetland. You were to ask 22,000 residents of Lionel Lakes why they live in Lionel Lakes, I can promise you, it will not be because they are excited to see high-density and multi-story apartment buildings in their backyard.
Thank you. We're gonna start our next question with candidate O'Connell. What would you tell a prospective resident who is concerned about the safety of the city's water?
Well, good question, stopping me because I'm on well water, in septic. So I do know that we have one well. It may have been fixed already, but was closed down, 'cause we're having a higher level of magnesium, if I'm not mistaken. So, pardon?
Magna, manganese.
Manganese, thank you. Sorry, sorry about that, thank you. So it's always a work in progress, making sure that the water is safe. The standards keep getting more stringent, which is, I think is a good thing, so that makes it that way. But as far as, I'm not, I don't think that would be a concern of mine coming to Lionel Lakes, that that water would not be drinkable or usable.
Thank you. Candidate Stays. What would you tell a prospective resident who is concerned about the safety of the city's water?
Thank you. So I think we need to discern the difference between municipal water and well water. The people that are connected to the municipal well, municipal water will be having a new water treatment plant that's gonna be considered a biological filter. It's gonna be a better water than we currently have. The water that we currently are drinking is safe, but we're gonna make it better, and according to the engineers and to all the people that are managing our water to make it better. For those that are on well water, I think they need to continue to monitor their water. Water's gonna be a thing that we're always gonna be watching. PFAS, we're certainly hearing a lot about that right now. Our currently water, our current water treatment plant will have capacity to potentially add that. It does not address the PFAS, but it's something that all communities need to be aware of, but, and it's something that we're currently monitoring. But water is something that's critical to our community, and I believe we're doing a great job with doing what we can.
Thank you. Candidate Reniker. What would you tell a prospective resident who is concerned about the safety of the city's water?
Well, water, as we all know, is the lifeblood of our existence. Either too much water or not enough water, and it's gonna be hard to survive. We live in a rural property. We have well water, and our well water is, we had it tested by the county. When the manganese concerns were brought to light, our water is, it's perfect, textbook. Others don't have that same luxury that we do, and I'm thankful that the city is taking the steps to, number one, investigate those levels, make sure that they're kept within check. And I know that city staff takes their job seriously, and they're gonna continue to work through that to try to figure out what we need to do to get those levels acceptable.
Thank you. Candidate Nelson. What would you tell a prospective resident who is concerned about the safety of the city's water?
I am so glad this question was asked. This is the crux of good city government. It is very boring. Sewer and water are very boring. But as a history major, I can tell you, it's clean water and adequate sewage handling that has made us more healthy now than any point in history. So these are very important issues. Yes, we are building a second plant, and yes, I drink our city water. Yes, it is safe. Yes, manganese was a problem. That issue has been addressed, and our city staff was very good at looking at these issues. But we will have water shortages. If we have water shortages and our wells run short, are we going to get boil water advisories? This is an extremely important issue and the crux of city government.
Thank you. Candidate Stowe. What would you tell a prospective resident who is concerned about the safety of the city's water?
Well, first of all, that's a good question. First of all, as a licensed plumber in the state of Minnesota, I would say if you have concerns, have your water tested, number one. Number two, I would not trust your local government. Look at Flint, Michigan. Number three, I would say that there was a huge opportunity loss. We have Minnesota, mining and manufacturing in Minnesota. They're the largest polluter in Minnesota. They're the ones, the reason that we have PFAS everywhere. They got sued and had to spend hundreds of millions of dollars, and that's why they're paying for the water treatment facility, like in Woodbury, for example. I don't know why we didn't go after that money. I guarantee you, we're gonna have PFAS in our wells if it's in the polar bears. I would also encourage anybody that has development around their property, if they're on their private wells, to have it tested. We need a plumber on this board, because we've got a lot of problems, and they're all plumbing-related. And we don't need more salesmen, and we don't need more architects. Currently, our mayor's an architect, and those projects always go over, and they're paid by how much they cost. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question will start with candidate Nelson, and it has to do with public safety. Consultants provided many suggestions in their strategic review of Lionel Lakes Public Safety Services. As a council member, what actions would you prioritize and why?
As I said before, public safety is number one. If you do not feel safe in your community, if you do not know that 911 is going to show up immediately, then what do we have? You have to feel safe, number one. Yes, I am aware of all the money spent on consultants, and I think that it is extremely too important to put money into and to follow those recommendations. I also think it's extremely important to speak with our firefighters and our police officers, to ask them directly, what do you see on the streets? What do you need? How can we help your job to feel better and more secure for you? They are the true experts, and yes, this is always, along with water and sewage, a number one priority.
Thank you. Candidate O'Connell. Consultants provided many suggestions in their strategic review of Lionel Lakes Public Safety Services. As a council member, what actions would you prioritize and why?
I'm so happy that they divided the fire department from the police again. That, I think, was, is just, you know, that suggestion, I think, is a long time coming. I have relatives that are policemen, I have relatives that are firemen. The only thing I really see the policemen do for the firemen is, in Minneapolis or St. Paul, make sure that the crowd stays away. We don't have that problem here. Yes, I think the police and fire do need to be funded. I don't know how the volunteer firemen, which is what we're using primarily now, is going to work, because we have so many people that don't live in Lionel, and we are growing. So I think we're gonna have to start, I know nobody wants to pay more money, but I think we might have to start paying for these people. We do pay for police, and we do pay for fire chiefs, but I think we might have to come up with some money.
Thank you. Candidate Reniker. The consultants provided many suggestions in their strategic review of Lionel Lakes Public Safety Services. As a council member, what actions would you prioritize and why?
Thanks for the question. Thanks for the question. Along with the others, I value the hard work that our fire, fire folks and police folks perform every day. I think it was a wise move by the city to separate the services. I value, I value the work of consultants, and the city paid a lot of money to have some consultant work and advice on this situation. But more than that, I trust the firemen, the firewomen, policemen, and policewomen. I trust what they have to say. I think the best thing would do, well, we could do, is to gather the thoughts of those folks that are, that are in, in the heat of it every day. I'd like to know what they think. How would they better services? How could they better what they do for the community? I think that's our, that's our best step.
Thank you. Candidate Stowe. Consultants provided many suggestions in their strategic review of Lino Lakes Public Safety Services. As a council member, what actions would you prioritize and why?
Sure. So the consultants made a recommendation to separate our public safety director, because we were no longer cross-classing skills with our police department and our fire department. The interesting thing to take note is if you back up the tape and you look at the open-mic comments over a year prior, I made the recommendation that we get rid of a public safety director and have a fire chief and a police chief. So then they went with the consultants, and how much did that study cost them to do what I recommended a year prior? Make it make sense. Thank you.
And finally, candidate Stays. The same question. Consultants provided many suggestions in their strategic review of Lino Lakes Public Safety Services. As a council member, what actions would you prioritize and why?
Thank you. I think I would prioritize three things. One is leadership, two is equipment, and three is employer of choice. Under leadership, we have two new directors now that are leading the ship. Under equipment, we're upgrading our police equipment to the Tahos, which are bigger equipment. On the fire side, we're investing in a new ladder truck, some other equipment that is needed. And then on the employer of choice, we're doing what we can to facilitate a fun environment and a well-compensated fire and police environment that will make us the employer of choice. That includes things like K-9 and other things like technology such as drones and other things that will help our community and also make our community safer, as well as an employer of choice.
Thank you. I think we have time for one more question before we move to closing statements. All right. This is a common question that we have in forums, because it's something you probably have heard about, door-knocking. How could communications with residents be improved in Lino Lakes? And candidate Stowe, could you start with that, please?
Sure. The number-one thing that I would recommend them to do is not waste their time going to the zoning stuff and the environmental board and all that, because they're all appointed by the city council. And the city council has complete authority, so all they do is make their recommendations to the council, and the, and the, and the neighbors show up to those boards and nothing happens. So if you actually want to make a difference, show up on the night of the vote for the, for the council members and make your voice heard. That'd be the number-one thing. The other thing is, you said door-knocking?
Well, no. How could communications with residents be improved?
Okay, that would be the, that would be the main, the main way is, is the communication there. And then also, when they're going to do developments, when we just did that water and sewer north of Bill's gas station on Lake and Main, we spent three and a half million dollars to drag city sewer and water to 20 homes, and they didn't tell those residents. They told them it was going to be 30 grand, it ended up being 50,000 bucks. And us, as taxpayers, we spent over, what, $175,000 a home? Because they wanted to put a development in there, and they weren't forthcoming with the residents there, and now they're going to put up with a high-density development north of their neighborhood after being price gouged.
All right. Thank you. Candidate Renneker. How could communications with residents be improved in Lino Lakes?
It's been a tough spot for some residents. As Mr. Stowe mentioned, there's been some, some improvements that have taken place. I mentioned earlier in one of my comments about a town hall-style meeting. I really think that's the best way to get the message out. I serve as a project manager in my, my day-to-day life, and I'm used to working with difficult situations with, with multiple parties from, you know, different, different angles, different views. And I think town hall is really the best. If we're going to add sewer and water to a neighborhood, let's bring in the city. Let's bring in the, the potential subcontractors on the project. Let's get the neighbors involved. Sending out a notice through the quad press isn't always the best way to reach some residents. Sometimes a quad press blows out your mailbox. So I think we need to find a better way to reach every resident, you know, either mailings, phone calls, if that's your preferred method. But a town hall-style meeting is absolutely the best way to increase communication on projects.
Thank you. Candidate Nelson. How could communications with residents be improved in Lino Lakes?
Meetings and mailings is absolutely true. Invite as many people as possible to anything that is going to affect them. Many people don't care to come out. They don't like to be out in public. They don't like to, to speak up. Fine, we must accommodate those people. Send letters. Send a questionnaire. Say, tell us your thoughts. You don't have to identify yourself. You don't have to show up in front of your neighbors. Tell us what you really think. But it's vital that city council reach out to the people affected by any development and actually talk to them.
Candidate Stays. How could communications with residents be improved in Lino Lakes?
Sure. One of the things we've just recently done is we've started the proposed development signs in the area where the proposed development is. So that's a drive-by, recognizable, hey, there's something moving, something happening here. And then there's an action item on that sign to go to a city resource to learn more about that. There's also a new website within the city of Lino Lakes that has all the developments out there that encourage all the employees, or all the residents to go after and look at. The residents, the employees are trying to keep that up to date. I'm also maintaining a Facebook page that has over 60,000 views in the last 90, 90 days. It's Lino Lakes City Happening. You're welcome to follow that, as well as I'm one of the few residents that are, are city council members that have my cellphone up on the city page as well, and certainly will accept any phone calls that come directly to me.
Thank you. And candidate O'Connell. How could communications with residents be improved in Lino Lakes?
Well, I agree with most people here. I think something like a little postcard, numerous ones, not just one, but start like a month before, then two weeks before, the ones before. I know it's going to cost money, stating this is the place and time where this is going to be, and it only needs to go to the actual people surrounding it. However, I think something like the Northwest Quadrant, Main Street, that's hard, need, needed to be involved with everyone. And I found that putting notification, when I first saw it in the quad newspaper on nextdoor.com, got numerous people saying they knew nothing about it. I really think that reaches a lot of people that we have no idea we're reaching, so, not reaching, I should say.
Thank you. That ends our question, question-and-answer period time. And now you should have one-minute prepared closing statements, and the order will go in as Renneker, Nelson, Stays, Stowe, and O'Connell. So candidate Renneker, please share with us your one-minute closing statement.
Thank you. I'm asking for your vote for city council. My plan is to lead with transparency, integrity, kindness, and an open mind. I believe everyone has a unique perspective to add to any discussion. I will always have an, an open ear and an open mind to any discussion. I, I plan on remaining in this community for, for the long term, and I'd like to see it remain the community that I grew up loving. Have a young family. They're, both kids are in the Centennial District, and we have, we have great schools. It's a great community. And again, to what I mentioned earlier, you, you take a poll of those 22,000-some residents, the majority of us really desire to see the same thing. Low-density trails, parks, lakes, open space. Let's maintain that while also supporting landowner rights. I, I always will support landowner rights, but we have to have a fine balance. So I'm always going to advocate for smart growth and a stronger community. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Nelson, please share your one-minute closing statement.
I am also asking for your vote for city council for Lino Lakes. I will listen to you. I will not simply listen politely and then vote how I choose to vote or the rest of the council chooses to vote. We are here to serve you, not the other way around. I also support our small and unique businesses. I do not support legacy neighborhood disruptions. I support our dark skies, our animals, our habitat, our green spaces, our low, low-density. These are extremely important things. They are worth fighting for. That is why we choose to live in our little gem of a city. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Stays, please share your one-minute closing statement.
Thank you for taking this time to pull this together. I'm running to serve. My focus is on delivering clean water, strong public safety, broadband choice, and responsible budgeting that respects every tax dollar. I'm also grateful to the dedicated city staff that keep our community running for, through their day-to-day work. I also want to recognize the professional city administrators who have served as civic mentors as to me for their leadership and example, such as Jeff Carlson, Sarah Cotton, interim David Picha, and now our new city administrator Karen Anderson. Their leadership has really helped lead the city, and I really appreciate all the hard work they've done. I also am proud to be deeply rooted in Lino Lakes, where it's volunteering in a disability ministry, serving in the North Metro TV Board, and thank you, North Metro, for hosting. And I'm here to make a difference, and I would, if you learn to, want to reach out to me, go to stays.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Stays, please share your one-minute closing statement. No, I mean Stowe. I'm sorry, I have messy handwriting here. Candidate Stowe, it's your turn.
Thank you. I'm asking the residents of Lino Lakes for, for your vote. My name is Christopher Stowe, and I do want to slow the grow, and I'm not afraid to say no. We need a cowboy on, 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 on the board, if you will. We need somebody that's going to call, call them out, have some accountability. I'm a plumber. The plumber's motto is for the health and safety of the nation. We've got water problems, we've got sewer problems, we've got drainage problems. And it's interesting, some of the people on this table today brought up going for walks and seeing cows. And once that Northwest Quadrant development goes in, the only cows up there off of Fourth Avenue are mine. Where are all the horses in the town? They're at my house. We, we need to, if you guys want to keep this thing rural, do it. Vote for me, I'll, I'll help you out. If you don't, we're going to continue to get what we've been getting, and it's not looking good. That's why so many people are running for city council. Thank you.
Thank you. And candidate O'Connell, will you please share your one-minute closing statement?
Yes. I'm asking for your vote because I think I am a good fit for the city council. I believe development is coming. However, it is not coming right now, but we have to keep working to get it to match the development, where it's being developed, to be similar to what it is like the residents around it is now. We have to rely on the staff, the boards, and the city council to make sure we deal with the developers. And I have seen the city staff being able to talk to Target and Eagle Brook, who had these other grand plans and were scaled back. So I think I could actually fit in with this, because I have dealt for years with people with many, with, everybody has a different personality and a different perspective on what they want and how they want it to be. And I've had to deal with that over the years.
Thank you. Thank you, candidates. You've done a wonderful job sitting in the hot seat. And I want to let you know, as well as the people watching, that you can find on the Vote 411 website, that is hosted by the League of Women Voters, links to this program, as well as on the North Metro TV site and our LWV ABC website and YouTube channel. The Vote 411 website also lists some of the candidates' answers to other questions. It has links if they have a website, has their contact information. Then if you need to learn more about voting, where to vote or how to vote early, go to the Secretary of State website, minvote.gov. This concludes our forum.